It's 5:15 PM and the city council is out of executive session. They called the meeting to order. The first item would be to pledge to our flag. Councilmember Hufaker, would you lead us?
Absolutely.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So roll call this evening. We have six councilmembers here. Councilmember Bailey has an excused absence today. First action item tonight will be our consent items, which include this evening's agenda, vouchers, and minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to revise the agenda for action item A. To read motion for city council toward the construction contract and approve the budget, project budget for the Stevens and Mission Landscaping Improvements Project to the lowest responsible bidder with recommendation of public work staff and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Okay, so we'll make that note with respect to the motion for action item A.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve this evening's consent items, which includes the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from their previous meetings, and the adjustment to the motion regarding action item A. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience could come up and address the council. Give you about three minutes. I'm asking you to give your name and address for the record. Not seeing any takers. We have a number of presentations tonight and proclamations. The first presentation is regarding the Apple Blossom recap from Darcy Christopherson. I even got your last name right.
You did. Good job. It's only been three years, but that's good.
I could call you Darcy Hinky.
Yes, you can do that. Okay, last year I was way more prepared and organized because I met with you at the end of May, and now the festival's only been over for four days, so I don't have a printout for you all. But I did email all of our sanctioned events to ask how they did this year, and they were all up from last year, which we were super excited about. The Pibus Art Walk was the best one ever. They loved it, and they even made T-shirts, so they were so excited about that. So that makes us happy that the other events are doing just as well as we are. We were also up this year in everything, the beer garden, arts and crafts, food. So that's kind of how I gauge the festival, is how we're doing, because if we make money, obviously people are enjoying the festivities. Again, a big thank you to the city of Wenatchee, Aaron. Back there, yep. He did great. He built these, well, sort of built, I guess.
Shelter shelters?
Yes, we have shelters for our electricity now, so we don't have these cords going everywhere, and that was huge. So that saved us with Ellen and I this year, so we really appreciate that creativity that you guys did. And of course, the police department. I have all three Bryans on speed dial with the police department, and they were awesome. I was telling Steve that the only issue is the protesters. But this year, they were better because the police gave them citations for being loud, and that caused them to not do it as much as they used to. So if we can keep on them, hopefully they won't come back. You know, we're one of the festivals that they pick. I think we're actually one of their first ones. We're on their circuit, so they pick us first, and I think that was great, how the police handled it this year. So do you not know what I'm talking about?
No. Tell me.
There's a group of protesters that are deeply religious that will run through the park during the parade and scream with their loudspeakers and kind of interrupt.
And last year, they stopped you in the parade, but this year, they were calmer this year. So I think if we just stay on top of it and not make a big deal about it, they tend to like that. You know, they want us to make a big deal about it. So we were much calmer than I was last year. One thing that was great for us is Crunch Pack sponsored our app. Last year, we had lots of feedback with the Tour de Bloom Committee and really community members about road closures and people not knowing that there were road closures, so we came up with the idea to have an app, Everything Apple Blossom. We got a sponsor for it, which was Crunch Pack, and that was a huge thing for us. Our phones did not ring during the festival, and I really believe it was because of the app. Linda, you worked in the festival office a few times, and you even said, "Oh, my gosh, it's so quiet."
It wasn't like the year before last.
Yeah, yeah.
And I put it on my phone. I used it constantly.
Four thousand, we got 4,000 people, and just from April 9th to May 9th today, yesterday, we got 1,200 just in that time. So I think that is something that is going to really help us, because I didn't get half of the complaints about road closures or anything like I did last year. So that's all I've got right now.
That's pretty good.
I can come back if you want me to, but that's all I got.
Out in the community, I did get this week, two persons commented on, "Thanks for the app for getting around traffic."
Good, good.
They didn't enjoy the traffic, but they enjoyed having the app to help them navigate.
That's kind of what we got, too, is they didn't love it, but at least they knew it was happening, and we could give them directions. And we also did a really fun PSA on social media on how to, Alex Haley did it, and that, I think, was really helpful, too, just saying, "It's Apple Blossom. You're going to have traffic. Go to the app and check it out." So I, and that's only going to continue in the future. And of course, next year's our 100th, so we're already planning for that. We will be announcing our theme on Wednesday for that, and we'll be bringing back the past royalties, so the parade will be a little bit longer this year for 2019, but it'll be great. We're not bringing a big celebrity. We're not going to do anything like that. We're kind of taking different traditions from each decade and celebrate that.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be fun. So the button a little look a little different.
I don't know if you saw the chief's report, but the crime was just sort of a regular weekend crime. Just, I saw, was it in the newspaper I saw? Where, I don't know, 20 years ago, there was 1,800 arrests or something, and we had a victim or something?
Yes. That was my first year as administrator. Yeah, I don't, I, that's not in my head anymore. I kind of forgot about that.
All right, any questions for Darcy? Thanks for being here.
Thanks again for everything. We couldn't do it without the cities. And we love the Rose Garden being gone, too. That was perfect.
All right. So next to our presentation tonight is the Art Month proclamation. Who's got the Arts Month?
I have that, Mayor.
Councilmember Poyer?
Whereas the arts, including dance, music, theater, and visual arts, and defined as a core content area in Washington State's definition of basic education, consideration an essential component of the complete education that should be provided for all students. And whereas learning in and through the arts enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination, creativity, discipline, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding, which supports academic success across the curriculum as well as personal growth outside the classroom. And whereas imagination and creativity are increasingly understood as critical capacities needed for success in the 21st century workforce. And whereas the arts can transform schools into havens of creativity and exploration, places where students want to learn, teachers want to teach, and all members of the learning community are more engaged and motivated. And whereas we applaud the efforts and dedication of the arts educators and advocates in the community, and we call for school and community leaders to continue to broaden and strengthen their commitment to provide arts education for every student in every school. Whereas the city of Wenatchee has invested in encouragement arts through the Arts of the Wenatchee Arts Recreation Parks Commission and 1% for Arts Fund. And whereas the commission commends the work in the Wenatchee School District for their efforts, which include Beauty of Bronze Elementary Art Academy Program, the District Art Show, the Strong String Band programs, that provide annual musicals and district-wide musicals that rival professional shows seen in much larger venues. Now therefore, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Arts Education Month in the City of Wenatchee, and Frank J. Coontz urge all citizens to join us in the special observations.
Thanks, Mike. Marlon, are you here?
Here.
Come on up.
How are you? On behalf of Parks and Arts Commission.
Oh, great. How are you? Hey, great, good. You want a microphone?
I don't know if I need a microphone, but just in case.
Thanks, Anna.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks. You want to say anything? No?
Oh, no. Much appreciated, all the things that we do in arts and the community.
Great, thanks.
Thanks a lot.
All right, our next proclamation is regarding Community Action Month. Who's got that one?
I do.
Councilmember Harold.
Whereas community action agencies in Washington State help low-income community members help themselves and become more self-sufficient. And whereas, community action agencies, in partnership with elected officials, the private sector, and low-income citizens, continue to identify challenges facing those with fixed and low incomes, and seek ways to strengthen the community. And whereas, strong, healthy communities are crucial to the quality of life and well-being for all. And whereas, for more than 50 years, community action agencies have provided vital human services that have produced tremendous outcomes in empowering families and individuals. And the motto of the Community Action Partnership, representing hundreds of community action agency across the U.S., is helping people changing lives. Now therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Community Action Month in the City of Wenatchee, and I encourage all people in our community to join me in this special observance. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 10th day of May 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Alan Walker is here on behalf of Community Action. Alan?
Hi.
Nice.
Do you want to be in the photo? Very good, very good.
No, I just want you.
Alan, Alan will talk. Thank you.
Alan, Alan will talk.
I'll get comfortable. Go. No, thank you very much. It's, I just started with the Community Action Council. I'm about day 100, and it's been a phenomenal opportunity to be a part of this organization. I think it's probably one of the best-kept secrets, unfortunately, in our community. Been around since 1965, and we're looking forward to some great opportunities lying ahead of us. So thank you very much for this evening and recognizing this month as Community Action Council, one of 1,000 community action councils across the country. So thank you.
Thanks, Anna. Is this up to hand out to us?
Just an invitation. It's a part of our thing, a spelling bee coming up. So thank goodness, you can do it in a group. You don't have to do it solo.
Thank you.
But on May 18th, it's a spelling bee, a little fundraiser, dessert auction, all kinds of fun stuff, so.
You mean, we can participate?
You have to participate.
All right, so we have a proclamation here for American Public Works Week proclamation. Who's got that one? So I think, Councilmember Koulas, why don't you read that into the record, and then I'm going to introduce a couple of new public works folks for us.
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being for the citizens of Wenatchee. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Wenatchee, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas, the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Resolved, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby designate the week of May 21 to 27, 2018, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed. Done at the City of Wenatchee, Washington, this 10th day of May, 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Koulas. And I think before we send up whatever public works crews we have out there, I do want to recognize our new Public Works Director. Rob Jammerman is here. Rob, you want to stand up? I know you guys met him last week, but he was promoted this week to Public Works Director, so I'm excited to have Rob. 30 years of experience at the city of Kirkland, and his first this week, right after he got appointed, he got to deal with our little drinking water issue, which I'll have you come up and talk about in a few minutes. We also have a new employee with us, Matt Collins. Where's Matt? He just joined our GIS manager, came to us from Louisiana, right? So welcome. Glad you're here. Nice to meet you.
You're welcome.
Who wants a proclamation, and who wants to come up? Anybody wants something? What am I going to do with this? Come on, Aaron, Rob, wherever the public works guy is.
All the public works.
All the public works.
Public works guy, take your picture taken. Come on up.
Maybe over there?
I don't care.
Or somewhere.
Wherever you tell me to go. Okay.
Crowd him.
All the guys, of course. Smile. Awesome.
All right, thanks, Anna. Thanks, guys. All right. So we also, what do you have, Ruth? You have Public Services Week? All right, so we're going to do a quick little Public Service Week proclamation. We're going to do a Public Service Week proclamation first before we give it to you. So Ruth has that to read into the record.
Public Service Recognition Week is in honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the job that keeps our nation working, whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. Whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. Whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, trained conductors, and astronauts, nurses, and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in, day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, the Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, Washington, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that May 6 through the 12th, 2018, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 7th day of May, 2018. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Ruth. Why don't you, yeah, give that to me. We did take donuts out to all the crews this week, so Anna, and Tammy, and Allison, we delivered donuts to all of the workers, and it's been a really good week around the city offices this week, so.
If you check out Facebook?
What's that?
If they check out Facebook, there's pictures of all the groups that we went and visited.
Oh, great.
Of everybody that wanted to get their picture taken.
Okay. And Anna made them get their picture taken. All right, Carrie, let's do our service awards. You want help from me?
I would love help with you, so good evening. So Carrie Page, Director of Human Resources, and I am here to recognize employees who have put in many years of dedicated service to the city. I have three of those valiant employees here today, but I want to, before I ask them to come up, I want to recognize those that couldn't be here today. For 20 years of service with the city, Terry O'Keefe, our Water Distribution Supervisor, he was recognized this morning by Rob Jammerman and crew, and couldn't be here this evening. For 10 years, Corporal Eric Vasquez, Police Corporal, Building and Fire Official for Community Development, Cliff Burdick, Jason Munson, Mechanic for Public Works, Ryan Weatherman, Police Corporal, and then Sandra Van Austin, Housing Program Coordinator for Community Development. So, and I should say on a note, for Sandra was with it five years. The others were 10. So, but we do have a really special one today. Jim Brown is here with us, and if we can have him come forward. He has served 25 years. He is the Support and Technical Services Manager for the Police Department.
Open this up.
Make it all pretty.
Break it.
Five years. So he gets a pin with a diamond in it.
Oh.
Yes.
Put you another tax bracket. We'll put that on your W2, you know. All right, thanks, Jim. Thanks for all your service.
Yes, thank you, Jim. So if we could have our very own Tim McCord come by.
Yay.
Super Tim, IAS Support Technician. He has been with us for 10 years.
Wow. 10 years? That went by fast.
Thanks, Tim. We appreciate you.
Enjoy your vacation you got coming up.
And then, last but not least, who's here today? If we could have Denise Pierce, please come forward. And Denise is with us for five years, and she is our Accounting Supervisor with Finance.
Denise is the one I always see late in your council meetings at about, what, 5:45-ish? She's the only one here walking out. Always working late.
So just for procedural purposes, to let you know, Terry O'Keefe, he was at the 20-year mark, so we've got a plaque for him as well, and we have an annual employee breakfast. And so since he wasn't able to make it here today, we'll have the mayor present him that plaque at that time, unless he's really dying to have it sooner than that. And then for others that weren't here to pick up their pins and certificates, our procedure is to give it to the director of that department, and for them to either throw a celebration similar to what Rob did, or simply just make a big deal of presenting it to him some way, somehow. So we'll make sure that they feel very appreciated.
All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
And just to add to the list, this is Municipal Clerks Week. So Tammy is at the Municipal Clerks Conference. And Anna, thank you for being the Assistant Clerk and enjoying Clerks Week, so want to recognize our clerks for us. All right, action items. We have a few of those this evening. The first is regarding the Stevens and Mission Street Landscaping Project. Jacob?
In Brooklyn.
Oh, in Brooklyn.
Hi, Brooklyn.
Hi.
Okay. Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. Tim, if we could get that. So we brought pretty pictures tonight as well.
I'm Brooklyn Holton, Housing and Community Planner.
Okay, so we are here tonight to get authorization for, to award the construction contract for this project. The city was awarded a $250,000 Complete Streets Grant from the Transportation Improvement Board, and one of the components, there's got four different components to it, and one of them is this landscaping improvement. So this project is at the intersection of Mission and Stevens, so where Stevens used to come down and intersect Mission. We're looking at putting in a decorative block wall, concrete benches, and a bunch of plantings down there to really spruce up the area. Let's see, this project's gone before several different committees. It's gone before the Public Works and Economic Development Committee, as well as the Arts, the Arts, Parks, and Rec Committee. In terms of the project itself, bids were opened on May 8th, so this last Tuesday, and we got one bidder, Trans Blue out of the Lynnwood area, at a total contract price of $100,791. Our engineer's estimate was $80,000, a little over $80,000, so unfortunately, we are over budget in terms of this project. But all things considered, with the current bidding climate and the unique aspects of the project, we're encouraged by the bid and would recommend award. So let's see, project has 20 working days, so about one month worth of duration. If all things go well, we'll get out basically at the end of June and hopefully be done by the 1st of August. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Did you mention Trans Blue? Is that the contractor?
Yep.
And they're from where?
The Lynnwood area.
Lynnwood, yeah. Or it must be like their niche, because right now it's tight to get bidding, I think.
Yeah, yeah. You know, in doing some research on them, it seemed like this was kind of their bread and butter in terms of a project, so I think they'll, I think they'll do a good job.
I know this is something we've been talking about, Councilmember Koulas in particular, since the highway was built.
About, this is one of about three things we really missed when we were doing all the negotiations and plans for the cellar bridge redo. We really missed on this one and a couple of others, and it's nice to see this, this will really.
Soften the blow. Is that the right term?
It will make a much more attractive entrance to the city, and it will cool down a lot of the asphalt that's down in that area.
So will the city come in and remove the current asphalt and things like that for them, or are they doing the whole project, all of it?
Their scope to do the whole project.
And it'll be, you can kind of see the rock walls at gray, kind of stream-looking thing, and on the east side of that, so when you're coming off of the bridge, it'll say, "Welcome, Bienvenidos, Wenatchee." So it's kind of that actual gateway where it's actually welcoming into it. And then in the, you can kind of see, it's a faded circle where the benches are, it's kind of like a half, half circle, and there's a light, oh, yeah, light outline that will, we got two proposals in to do a painted mosaic in that area. And so we're working on this week and next week of getting back to those artists and working on who will do that. And then also, the diversity council's working on an initiative for more cultural representation within street and place names. And so there, I'm working with them as this is their first project to name, as that is one that's more cultural, cultural representation of our community. So it's kind of a, it's been pretty heavy on the community involvement part, so I'm excited about that.
I know the neighbors are really excited.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They've, they make sure their customers are coming and telling us when we're trying to get feedback. They're like, "Did you go talk to them yet?" Like, "Go to their table. You need to go to their table." I'm like, "Okay." She said.
Well, sounds like great news. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city council toward the construction contract and approve the project budget for the Stevens and Mission Landscaping Improvements Project to the lowest responsible bidder with the recommendation of public work staff and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor signing of the construction contract documents and the proposed budget for the Mission and Stevens Street Landscaping Improvement Project. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn. Thanks, Jacob. Thanks to the Parks Guys. This is going to be a great project. We're looking forward to it. Next item, item B, is regarding a middle school crossing improvement, interlocal agreement with Wenatchee High School. Jacob, is that you?
That's me.
All right.
And then I'll get down to your hair. So we, city acquired a Safe Rusty School Grant through Wash Dot Local Programs that will construct crossing improvements, so RRFBs, as well as some sidewalk improvements in two locations. One, across Maple Street in front of Foothills Middle School, and then also at the intersection of Miller and Orchard, so Crossing Miller. During the design of this project, we found out that some of the driveway entrances into Foothills Middle School, where our project was adjoining, weren't in good shape, but it wasn't in our scope of work to take on anything on school district property. We reached out to the school district to see if they wanted to fix their, you know, their approaches in conjunction with our project, and they decided that they would like to do that. So that's the purpose of the interlocal agreement. In terms of costs, it's about roughly $38,000 worth of work, based on our estimates, that they would reimburse us for. that they would reimburse us for. The school district has already signed it, so at this point it's, it's up to us. If you have any questions, I will take them.
Thanks Jacob, always nice to coordinate with other governmental agencies when we can.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's definitely beneficial for both, both parties here.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Wenatchee School District Number 246, providing for the reimbursement of cost incurred with the design and construction of additional improvements associated with project number seventeen fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Sparza to approve the interlocal agreement with Wenatchee School District regarding our project number one seven one five. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Jacob. Mr. Jeremy Hoover Sewer Installation out into Sunny Slope. Looks like we got good bids back.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Jeremy Hoover, Senior Utility Engineer. I'm here to seek council approval to have the, to award the contract for construction of the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Project Phase One to Rodarte Construction in the amount of four hundred and forty, four million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. And further authorize the mayor to approve the construction contract contingent on Shaland County granting a franchise agreement or issuing a right-of-way permit for construction. You guys may have remember this project. We're building a sewer across US Two in through Chatham Hills, up across 285, up School Street, as well as parallel to 285 over to some new developments. Been working on this for about eight months or so. Excuse me. We had, we issued this. Excuse me, we advertised the project. We opened bids on April twentieth. We had three bidders, Sellin Construction, Hurst Construction, and Rodarte Construction. Rodarte was the low bid. The engineer's estimate was just under five point one million dollars. The high bid was just under four point nine with Rodarte coming in as the low bidder at just under four point five million dollars. We are hoping to be able to take this to construction and finish it this year. All things going well, that'll probably be finished up mid-November. One minor change that I want to point out to this agenda item is that the dollar value for Rodarte's bid that's listed for four point four seven million dollars does not include the sales taxes. So the actual construction contract will be about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars more, grand total of four million, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Minor change.
Alright, any, any questions for Jeremy? If, I know this has been a long time coming, so I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to award the contract for construction of the Old Station Sanitary Sewer Extension Project Phase One, project number one seven one eight to Rod, Rodart?
Rodarte.
Rodarte Construction, Inc. in the amount of four million, four hundred and seventy-three, six hundred and eleven dollars and further authorize the mayor to approve the construction contract contingent on Shaland County granting a franchise, a franchise agreement or issuing a right-of-way permit for construction.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Markhart to approve the contract with Rodarte Construction, Inc. in the amount of four million, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and authorize the mayor's signature subject to completing their franchise agreement with Shaland County. Discussion?
Out of curiosity, do you have to say plus taxes or?
I think we're okay.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Jeremy, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Homeless Grant Budget Amendments, who's doing the homeless grant stuff? Glenn.
Does these numbers include taxes or?
Evening. City of Wenatchee is responsible for administering the ten-year plan to reduce homelessness in coordination with the two counties in East Wenatchee. And that includes budgeting. And we received a request to buy Women's Resource Center for additional funding. They have a, a high potential of a reduction in their funding from United Way. They won't know for certain the full extent until the summer. The Steering Committee met on this twice. The first time they reviewed the request from, from Women's Resource Center and then asked the Executive Director to attend the next meeting in April, end of April. And they were, they agreed that, that the funds should be provided, but they wanted to know a, a little more certainty on the exact amount. And so what they are recommending is that through the end of August, that an amount of four thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars per month be provided for a total of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And that essentially, once there's some certainty on the exact amount that they may be deficient, that then that could be, a secondary request could be addressed during the summer. And they'd have time before the end of August to do that. But the Steering Committee was equally concerned and, you know, they discussed, really there wasn't another way to fill the gap with it, with the funds being potentially absent. The staff has a suggested motion for your consideration to enter into an amendment of the sub-grant agreement providing for a funding transfer from an existing fund that's managed by Women's Resource Center and is not, because of the somewhat of a late start, starting the landlord liaison program, there is excess funds in that fund. And so the motion would provide for a transfer of those funds for this purpose. Are there any questions that I can answer?
And part of this is to make up for a potential shortfall in United Way funding, so it's, I mean, it's.
It's highly likely, and then if the funds weren't needed, then we could coordinate that through, you know, the, the funds. They'd still be in the overall funds held by agencies. And we could work that through and resolve any, any changes through inter, inter-fund transfers, that type of thing. So, but the main thing is to make sure that their whole, they don't have the ability to, to backfill this amount of money.
Keith, I don't know how to say this nicely, United Way's really had some issues with some of their bookkeeping issues, cash flow sort of issues. We, we paid them some money to help with Our Valley, Our Future to get Steve Maher caught up to date. He didn't get paid, finally got paid. So they're really having some issues. So some of the organizations that were receiving money have been told that they're going to get nothing or very little. So for Bruce Housing, I mean, that just kills them, right? So I think this is an opportunity for us to backfill if there's a need to kind of fill in where some of this United Way hasn't quite happened, yeah.
And, and that was my only concern there is that if and so.
Yeah, we've got, we'll, we'll be monitoring that pretty closely.
They, they were notified that there would be a shortage on funds. And also I think it's very important to note that these are not new dollars, they're just.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. And I'm sure that's why they had the Executive Director come in, try and nail down a, a better number because it, it sounds like there was just too many unknowns, so.
Alright, thanks Glenn. I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I will move for City Council to accept the recommendation by the Steering Committee and to authorize the mayor to enter into amended sub-grant agreements with the Women's Resource Center to allow a funding transfer of twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars between the Landlord Liaison Sub Grant and the Bruce Transitional Housing Sub Grant.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Huffaker to accept the recommendations of the Steering, Steering Committee and to transfer money between funds to help the Bruce Transitional Housing Program. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks Glenn. Next up is ordinance regarding the City of Wenatchee and potential going to the bond market to help pay for some of those sewer improvements that we talked about earlier today. So we've got Brad Posehn Jack, and we've got our City Bond Counsel Roy Cogan here with us. Roy from Spokane to go over the, the financing. Gentlemen, it's all yours.
Mayor, Council, I guess introductions have already been done, so I'll jump right in. So tonight, well, I guess we'll start with last year, the Council approved the, adopted a sewer comprehensive plan that included expanding and improving the sewer system. The Council also approved new sewer rates, and those will end up paying for the bond issue that we're discussing tonight. So projects in these, projects funded by these bonds include Horse Lake Road, Old Station Sanitary Sewer Expansion that you just approved the bids for, preliminary engineering of the digester and the control building, SCADA upgrades, pipeline replacement program, and sewer improvements to Confluence Parkway. Altogether, to do these projects in the next two years, we need fourteen million dollars in bond proceeds to be able to do that. Again, we'll be funded with, with just our sewer rates. So on top of that, on top of that, we also have an opportunity to refinance some older sewer, water sewer revenue bonds. And so about three million of this bond issue will refund, refinance those and save us hopefully about two hundred thousand dollars on our interest costs over the life of, the remaining life, excuse me, the remaining life of those bonds. So we've been working with, with our Bond Counsel at Cutac Rock and our underwriters at DA Davidson. And so tonight we have an ordinance twenty eighteen dash ten authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed seventeen and a half million dollars of the city's water and sewer revenue and refunding bonds. And if you have any questions, we have Roy Cogan and Roy Cogan to answer those.
Well, can you, can you explain the, the rebuyback part of the three million? I kind of get it, but I just want to.
Sure, Roy Cogan, Cutac Rock, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. The two thousand seven bonds are subject to redemption. And if market conditions are favorable and we can affect a net present value of five percent savings, and that's after all costs are paid, so that's five percent to the city. If we can achieve that, we'll issue refunding bonds, the proceeds of which will buy government securities. Be put into an escrow, and they will mature in such times and amounts as needed to redeem and cancel the two thousand seven bonds on their call date. And once the bond issue closes, the holders of the two seven bond, two thousand seven bonds in escrows funded can only look to the escrow. They can't look to the city for payment, so there are not two series of bonds outstanding. It will just be the two thousand eighteen bonds. If we can't achieve a five percent net present value savings, the refunding will not occur. And what this, what the ordinance does is it delegates to the mayor, finance director to accomplish the bond issue under certain parameters. The total interest costs cannot exceed five percent. The bonds have to mature with it by twenty thirty-eight. The maximum interest rate cannot exceed five percent. And the bonds have to close by the end of this calendar year, or else the delegation expires. And as I said earlier, the net present value savings of the refunded bonds, refunding bonds has to be at least five percent. And the bonds we're looking at total three, three million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it's likely there's already three million dollars outstanding. We need to borrow fourteen, so do we borrow fourteen and leave the three? Or do we borrow seventeen and pay off the three, in essence? And they run the math and say it's better to borrow seventeen and pay off the three.
Yeah, the only reason to do the refunding is to achieve the savings.
Bottom line though, what would the savings be?
You know, we don't know right now, and we wouldn't know until we sell the bonds and have an offer from DA Davidson. But in any event, if the savings does not equal five percent, we cannot do the transaction.
On their, on their preliminary documents, they have a present value of savings from cash flow and is at two hundred, just over two hundred thousand. So if that's what, if it means what it looks like it means, then our savings, our projected savings based on today's rates, if we were to.
Based on, yeah. And that's, that's the unknown, is we don't know what rate we're going to get.
They could change a month from now, but I don't think anybody expects them to change drastically between.
It's a pretty common practice that we've done.
Yes, yes.
It is.
I think just about every one of our bonds that we've issued after, after ten or fifteen years have been, have been refinanced.
And interest rates are starting to go up, so the timing for us is now. And this one may actually last the life of it depending on what the economy does and kind of rates. And you can't predict the future, the, the savings until we're actually ready to sell the bonds. I think we're planning on getting to the market by the end of June. We're meeting with rated agencies next week, so middle to end of June. If everything goes according to plan, I think we'll be in the bond market.
Yep.
I just like the hard numbers, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Percentages or.
I wish I could give you something definitive, but until we're actually have an offer to buy the bonds, we just really don't know.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten, an ordinance of the City of Wenatchee, Shaland County, Washington, authorizing the sale, issuance, and delivery of not to exceed seventeen million, five hundred thousand dollars of the city's water and sewer revenue and refunding bonds of one or more series to pay, redeem, and retire all or a portion of the city's outstanding water and sewer revenue bonds, Series two thousand seven, and to finance certain capital improvements to the water, sewer, and storm drainage system of the city, providing for the designation, date, terms, maturities, form, payment, and redemption provisions of the bonds, designating a fiscal agent, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement for use in the payment of the refunded bonds, authorizing the purchase of certain government obligations, providing for the call, payment, and redemption of the refunded bonds, providing for the registration and authentication of the bonds, creating and adopting certain funds and accounts for providing, accounts and providing for deposits therein, covenanting to comply with certain federal tax and securities laws, authorizing the sale of the bonds, delegating certain matters to the mayor and finance director, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulaus, second by Councilmember Markhart to adopt ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten regarding our sewer bonds in the amount of seventeen million, five hundred thousand dollars. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Roy, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
I'm safe and back to Spokane, you and Adam.
Thank you.
Part of our annual process with having bonds now and what happened to us is we have to have an annual meeting with Roy to go over certain bond covenants and bond laws to stay educated. So Roy was here this afternoon for some other meetings. Last item of our action items is regarding appointing voting representatives to A W C Annual Conference. I believe that Lyle is going, and I believe Jim is going. Is anybody else going? So if not, I guess we would entertain a motion to.
That I might, but I'd be certainly willing to defer that to someone else.
Um, I might too, so. Do you want to try me first and then if I, if I can?
I would be happy to defer to you to, to go, I, I think you should.
So there's an issue between going to the meetings and then being present to be able to vote. But we're trying, anybody can go to the meetings. What we're basically saying is who wants to be voter. So should we put Ruth in there?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll put Jim, Lyle, and Ruth. So I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution two thousand eighteen dash eighteen, appointing Lyle, Jim, and Ruth.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number two thousand eighteen dash eighteen, appointing three City Councilmember, Councilmembers, those being Ruth Asparza, Jim Bailey, and Lyle Markhart as voting representatives on behalf of the City of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington City's Annual Conference Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer to appoint Ruth Asparza, Lyle Markhart, and Jim Bailey as voting representatives to the A W C Annual Meeting. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A couple of things on the mayor's report. I did want, Rob, if you could come up and just talk a little bit about the water issue that we had during the week. I know you've probably all heard about it, but great job by the city's team. We got some irrigation water backflowed into the city system. And you want to give us just a quick update on how that all went?
Yeah, certainly. Again, Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director. And I'll kind of give you the facts here. Before I do that, I wanted to say. Before I do that, I wanted to say, you always know how good your team is when you face a crisis, and when we learned of this problem on Monday, the team really came together. We had staff from environmental, water, anybody that was available to help, and it was comforting to me, being sort of new, the new guy here. When I asked around, what do you do in this type of situation? They said, I don't know, we've never faced this before. And everybody came together, and we got on the phone right away with Department of Health, and, and that, we, we chuckle about that, but that's actually a good problem. It's good that we haven't faced this in the past, but, so, so, yeah, on May seventh, Paula Salter and Jessica Shaw responded to a water complaint of discolored and stale water coming from a customer's sink. Adam Neely, who reads all of our water meters, was quickly called to start checking water meters, and Paula and Jessica started testing for chlorine levels. Within thirty minutes, we realized, Adam found that there was a water meter that was spinning backwards, so there was water being pumped from the, from the irrigation system into our domestic system. We quickly, Adam was able to quickly shut that off and isolate that, and we then called in our water crews to begin flushing the system. Andy O'Kelly, Brian Smitty were the next members to arrive, helped out with the flushing. I took over lead as, with Department of Health, I got them on the phone. Ron Hall, our GIS technician, prepped, prepared a map of all the affected homes. We were able to isolate the homes to about forty homes, so if you, if you saw the map on the press release, we were able to isolate that just based on chlorine testing. And so we then, we started to prepare our notifications after talking with the Health Department, and then Monday evening, we went out, we had Jenny Raisin, Kelsey Gibbs, Ruda Jones, Tony Scherting, Dennis Smith, Josh Mannering, Nick Pell, I mentioned Paula and Jessica, we were all there Monday evening, going door-to-door, talking to all the owner, property owners, telling them what had occurred, and that they could, it was safe to use the water for showering, restrooms, et cetera, but not to drink the water, wash vegetables. Little side note for you, I expected, being out there, that we would receive a lot of, you know, how, how could this happen? Every single person out there was thankful for the city and the job we were doing, that we were out there going door-to-door. We had, we brought a flatbed out with cases of water, we provided cases of water to every property owner, and they were very complimentary of staff and, and, and said, you know what? This is, we, this is fine, we'll get through this if it's one day or two days. So again, it was very, very well received. We had a couple of calls with questions about, from the media about the, how, if, was it further reaching than the forty homes? And, and those, again, those went well, and the press was great. So I'd like to also recognize that on Tuesday, Will Weems, Terry O'Keefe, Adam, again, Adam, Julie, Paula and Kelsey, they were all out Tuesday because we had to extend the boil water for one more evening into Tuesday. And then by Wednesday, we have our own lab of the Public Works, of the Public Service Center. By Wednesday, our test results came back that our water, the chlorine levels were good, and so we were able to lift that ban on Wednesday evening. So that's a long story, but it was a, it was a...
And what do we do for the gentleman who didn't put the black flow valve in?
Anti-siphon valve.
Obviously, there's a cost to this. I mean, government isn't free.
That's, yeah, we'll be tracking our costs, holding up our staff time on this, and I asked Jessica Shaw, our environmental manager, about what we would, what, what language we have on the books for this particular situation, and it's not, you don't write the code for this, you have generalities, and so our code enforcement language would allow us to seek damages. What I had suggested, we'll, it's a property manager that manages, it's a rental property of about twenty duplexes, so we'll be contacting, contacting that property owner and the property management company about reimbursing the city for the cost. And then I suggested to Jessica that we bring back to the council here in the next month or two, the language that we should have in our, in our ordinance that would address the situation, because it's fresh in your minds, and it's a good time to talk about what should we have for ordinances when these things, type, type of things come up. So that's the plan, unless, and we can go a different direction or if, if you'd like, so like some feedback if you have any.
Well, Rob, I believe there's already a, a code about that you, if you're connected to irrigation, I'm assuming it's a sprinkler is what this guy did and didn't turn his valve correctly, and then you have the anti-siphon valve, and I think there's a code that says every year you have to prove to the city that you've had it inspected.
Yeah.
Am I, where am I at?
You're, you're exactly correct. The, the challenge here was the property owners did not know, we sent out a survey, do you have a irrigation system tied to the city's domestic system? Yes or no? And if you check yes, do you have a backflow device? They checked no. They did not, they thought they just had a separate connection off the irrigation with no connection to the city system. They in fact had a connection through between the two so that they could water their lawn off the irrigation or off their domestic. And so they have corrected that, they corrected that right away this week. And so it's one of those things, we also use this as an opportunity, as a public education opportunity. So when I was interviewed on the radio and in the paper and so on, we talked about the importance of this and the importance of knowing if you have a backflow preventer, where your water's coming from, and the importance of our program that requires them to be tested annually. And so we're, again, it's a learning moment for the community and for us, and we're going to, we're going to make it better as we go forward.
Yeah, so I think in essence that the irrigation system, the pump would come on, and it was pumping water, and it was actually pumping at a higher pressure than our water pressure was coming in, and without the backflow valve, it just started going the other direction, right?
That's correct.
The city did do, I'm going to say the city did do a good job in, I think it was three or four years ago to implement that. There was nothing for, ever, except for three or four years ago, so I, I believe the city did do a good job, it's just the survey wasn't, the person didn't check the right box.
Exactly.
How common are these systems where they're connected to both, the, you know, domestic water and, and the...
Pretty common.
Yeah. Yeah. What staff tells me is that, I mean, the majority of people want to water their lawn off the irrigation water because of the cost, but they do, they do have, some of the older properties that were built do have the through connections. If the irrigation system goes down, if the canal went down or pump went down in July, they would want the ability to keep watering the lawn until that was repaired, but I don't have a number, a statistic to know how many. So we, we have a cross-control staff person that's highly trained to watch and look for these things when she's out, inspecting, and, and she had been in this neighborhood, had surveyed, but did not see anything above grade that would be a telltale sign that there was this type of system, because it was buried. So it's, it's just part of us doing more, more inspection, more due diligence out there and, and bettering the system.
Thank you.
I, I still say I don't know what much more you can do. I'm just, I'm going to defend the city on this. There's not, I just don't, I get it, educate and maybe send another flyer and do that, but people aren't checking the right box.
Yeah. And I guess the reaction with staff was great, getting water bottled and all that stuff was fantastic. For me, the issue is, clearly there was a violation here, and how much of an issue do you make of this one violation?
They responded unbelievable. I mean, that's, that makes you proud of the city that go out there and say, oh, let's get some water out there bottled, let's do what we can, let's start within thirty minutes. I mean, you have to be proud of the city for that.
Yeah. Yeah. Just, in my discussion with the Department of Health, they were very complimentary of the way we responded. They said unfortunately, this happens more often than not. We just have been, you know, I probably do to our good practices here in Wenatchee, we haven't had it come up, but they, so they, they said, they walked us through it and said, here's what you need to do, and, and they were complimentary of the way we handled it.
Great. Thanks, Rob. That's really all I have for the mayor's report. I don't know, we have execs, no, we have a work session next week with a number of items on there.
Yes, we have four items on there, and we have public safety committee, we haven't had one for a bit.
So we'll have one next Thursday?
Keith and Jim.
Okay.
Planning on being here.
Awesome.
Anything from council committees and things you've been working on?
Well, I received a letter today from Peter B. King announcing that I'm now on the committee for legislative priorities for AWC.
Oh, good.
For a two-year term.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I won't be here next week, I'm in Seattle for a training, but we'll be driving home about the time we start councils, so I will be calling in for it.
For the work session? Okay.
And I won't be here.
You won't be here, yeah.
So a solid waste, I've mentioned before how China has stopped taking a lot of our recyclables, and it's gotten worse instead of better. So trying to figure out what to do with that, because right now, a lot of our recyclables are actually ending up in landfill, which doesn't seem to make sense if we're collecting it and just ended up pouring it in the dump, so.
I didn't realize most of our recyclers ended up in China.
A lot of it did, and, and part of the big problem was, is contamination of it, so people would think, I want to recycle this piece of cardboard, but it's a pizza box, it's got food on it, it doesn't qualify. So there's a lot of issues with trying to educate the public about what's recyclable and what's not. So they're going to try and do some PSAs and maybe get some wires going and things like that, but the good news is, we did get some funds released to possibly complete our moderate waste facility.
I've heard that, I've heard we're close, yeah.
The, the letters that all the mayors and commissioners wrote made a big difference, and so we're hoping to have that completed maybe by the end of this year.
Okay. Great.
It'll be a stripped-down version of it, but it'll be...
All right.
Up.
Better than what's there right now, right?
It's better than the, all the metal sitting there in a pile.
Yeah. Anything else for the, good of the order? All right, so we'll see you guys, those that are going to be here next week for our work session. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned.